All right, so we'll move back to Mill.
Yeah.
And under agenda item eight point three point one Mill Market relocation update, I have a motion by councilors Christian and Gardi resolved that the report of the Deputy C O community development and enterprise services dated June thirteenth twenty twenty two be received and city council authorized staff to issue a tender for the renovations and leasehold improvements of seventy three Brock Street to host Mill Market to Saint Marie. Further, that council approved an expenditure of up to one million four hundred thousand dollars from the sources outlined above to fund a city contribution to the project. Further, that council approved in advance of up to four hundred and ten thousand dollars interest free from internal funds to cover leasehold improvements to the Mill Market, which the Mill Market will pay back over a twenty five year period with annual contributions of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. Further, that council directs staff to develop a lease agreement with Mill Market to Saint Marie for the seventy three Brock Street facility, including a collaboration on the mobile retail units to be brought back to council for approval.
Okay, so questions from councillors. So I had councillor Shoemaker's hand went up first. We'll start with him, then councillor Vezel, and then councillor Bruni.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you, well, no, not through you, but to you. With respect to the denial of funding by the federal government, is there any opportunity to work with our federal representative to see if there's a possibility of securing funding, even if not from this envelope, from any other available funding sources?
There is. I can maybe this would be helpful to council to, obviously, when we receive this information, I spoke to our Member of Parliament about it. My understanding that is that the application might have been a bit beyond the scope of the of the pool of funds, but that it's a rolling intake. So they're actually accepting additional applications. So so I'll ask Mr. Ver to kind of give some clarity. My understanding is is that the the application has been re scoped and resubmitted. So there is an application back in front of the federal government. I assure all of you, I will be working very diligently to support the Mill Market in that ask. And, you know, we have a commitment from our M P that he will support our effort in that ask. So I don't think the story is completely told on this. I think that there is still an opportunity to get a really reasonable sum of money from the federal government to support this project. And we'll work, we'll work to make that case. Mr. Ver, did you want to add anything?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor, no, just to confirm that application has been resubmitted to the program. And so we look forward to working with the federal government to see that approved.
Do we know through you, Mr. Mayor, when a response might be forthcoming? Are we looking at weeks, months?
Through you, Miss Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't know.
We weren't given any indication of that.
Not even an absolute outside date where? No.
Okay.
We weren't.
Well, my my preference, obviously, and would be that we wait to hear on on funding from that. And I would, you know, after, I guess, everybody's had the opportunity to make their points, I'd move to defer this until we hear about the funding application. If if there is a second for that.
So so you're putting that motion forward now?
I'm content to put it forward afterwards, when everybody's had the opportunity to speak.
Okay, so we'll we'll go through it, then we can come back to that. Is that it for you, councillor Shoemaker?
I've got comments, but I'll wait.
Councillor Vezel Allen?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ver. Mr. Ver, the four hundred and ten thousand dollars in leasehold improvements, what does that encompass?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel Allen. It's it's a range of the upgrades that'll take place within the facility. We have a rough budget that scoped out with the consultants now. And we're looking at a number of the items, you know, in the interior shell of the building that would serve the market. So things like the washroom upgrades, things like the flooring, et cetera, that we require to make it a habitable space for the Mill Market. Certainly, the city owns the building. So when we look at things like the roof and some of the other major repairs, we're looking at as more of a city responsibility, but the market would be contributing to those interior items.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the resubmission to the infrastructure green fund, how much was that asked for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel Allen. It was the re scoped project that we have now of two million dollars. And the G I C B program can cover up to eighty percent of that funding, but we'll have ongoing discussions hopefully with the federal government about what that share could be for this re scoped project. The larger budget item that was originally submitted included things like a commercial kitchen and an elevator. So that is left for potentially a future phase of the building, and we've re scoped to this smaller phase to get the Mill Market into the building.
In terms of the commercial kitchen, did the Market Board of Directors look at leasing the equipment rather than purchasing the equipment, as most restaurateurs do?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel Allen. Actually, with the addition of the mobile retail units that'll be coming online, two of those units have a commercial kitchen space. So I think through that process, the market has realized they can hold off on that commercial kitchen until a future phase of expansion is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Ver. And in terms of looking at other resources, is there a plan through the Mill Market Board of Directors to diversify their asks, such as a capital campaign, rather than just going for through funding applications through private and public sources?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezel Allen. Certainly, yes, there is that opportunity. To date, they've been focused on the funding applications to different government programs. But that's something we can take to the board, and I'm sure they'd be open to considering that.
Thank you, Mr. Ver.
Councillor Bruni, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Ver. Mr. Ver, if the if the Mill Market can't pay the the sixteen thousand four hundred a year, what is there a plan? If this goes forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. When we worked with the Mill Market Board to set up that contribution amount, it was an amount that we felt was attainable by the Mill Market, given their success to date, as well as the collaboration with the mobile retail units. Should they not be able to meet that commitment, it would be something we would have to bring back to council and discuss next steps from the city's perspective. But we do feel that the amount that we've agreed upon with the Market Board is something they can achieve. They have been able to save forty thousand dollars, which they will contribute to the project to date. They are very diligent with their funds, and I think it's an amount that everyone's comfortable that they can achieve going forward.
What is the expected proposed rental revenue from the mobile units?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. We've taken, I think, a conservative initial estimate. We're certainly viewing it as a pilot project with these new retail units coming out. So we see the annual revenue being approximately fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. And, you know, that will depend on the the interest that we get from the mobile retail units. That'll depend on how many months of the year operators are prepared to use them, but we think that's a conservative number that we can achieve.
Now, does the city collect the fourteen? The fourteen for fourteen four hundred, or does the Mill Market collect?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. That's something we're going to work out with the agreement with the market. I think our our thinking right now is that the market would collect that. They already work with vendors. They manage the requests from different vendors for space within the market. And so we see that as a positive collaboration with the market to take care of managing the mobile retail units on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. And the question to Ms. Shell regarding the asset management reserve. Michelle, how much money do we have in that reserve right now?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. At this point in time, we have an uncommitted balance of two point three million, and that includes seven hundred and seventy two thousand dollars that was allocated from the twenty twenty one surplus.
So if you eliminate the twenty twenty one surplus, you're going to get approximately one point four million. So that so really, I mean, this surplus we put in there was very helpful, but if we didn't have that surplus, we would have probably eliminated this reserve, basically, correct?
Yes, you could say that.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dufour.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My question's through you to Tom. Tom, can do you recall when the first time was that the city had proposed demolishing this building?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. I did look into that, and in two thousand eleven, council had previously looked into demolishing the building.
So just for the purposes of people that are watching, you referred to it as this building, and you said the building. Which building are you two speaking about?
The Fish Hatchery Building.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, but I just want people that are watching to understand what's happening. So the current building that the Mill Market is in.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So i- is it that safe to say, you know, through you, Mr. Mayor, that that this building has been, you know, for better or worse, limped along for already a decade? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. Correct, the building was built in nineteen eighty seven. And, you know, as we previously mentioned, it was discussed to be demolished in two thousand eleven. The the building, Fish Hatchery Building, was never meant to be a permanent home for the Mill Market. It was when initially approached or proposed to the city, it was meant to be a temporary home before it moved. So it has been limped along. Certainly, there are outstanding issues that need to be addressed with the building.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ver. Does the current market building have any connection to city sewer services? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. No, it does not. The market actually pays for pump out services for their facilities. Thanks. And as far as we know, on that site, is there any opportunity for expansion of that of that current building, given some of the environmental conditions there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. Certainly, there would need to be a significant remediation done to the building if we were to look at expanding it. And, you know, a fair amount of work done to looking at what's there now and looking at how that will be accomplished.
Those are all my questions. Thanks, Chris Ver.
Councillor Nero, next.
Thank you, Mr. Ver. Through you to Mr. Ver. Mr. Ver, further to the last answer you gave to councillor Dufour's question. Is there, would there be any impact in relative costs to this facility, the existing facility, if we were to delay the new facility? I I know that your report says that we would require significant capital investment, but is there anything in the short term that we would have to do to that building?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni.
Nero.
Nero, sorry. My apologies. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. The I think it's fair to say that staff was looking at with the acquisition of the Brock Street building that the market would be moving. And previously, obviously, we had the opportunity with the Boarding Urban Indigenous Committee for Development there. So we haven't been spending a lot of time looking at the facility and anticipating that move. So we would need to do some asset management work to look at that facility if we were planning to stay in there in order to determine what repairs and renovations would need to be done.
Okay. Looking, I I understand the answer, and I know that you what you need to do to get the answer to that question, was looking more for information to the possible motion that would be upcoming to to defer this. And just to have some some information to help decide if a deferral is detrimental to this project.
That's a separate question. I think I think if you're asking, if you're asking, and it's a good question, and it's 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 something that's going to should be should be asked. I think if you're asking, is there any money you need to spend in the next couple of months? I mean, the thing's still standing, so the answer to that probably is no. Yeah, but but the if the question is, is there a problem with the deferral? Because that's a question I actually asked earlier today, because I was kind of thinking the same thing as councillor Shoemaker was. Maybe it'd be a matter to to defer, but the deferral creates a timing issue and staff's ability to actually get this thing out to to tender and get it back from tender with the price. So so it does create an issue, but they can they can speak to that specifically. Mr. Ver?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. Certainly, the the hope and the goal would be we'd be able to continue with the process that we started with M G P and be able to tender that project such that the renovations could be completed and the the market building would be able to open in approximate timing for the plaza to open. Obviously, there's a lot of synergies between those two projects and a benefit to getting all the construction completed while one is underway and the other one would be underway at the same time. As discussed earlier, there's nothing immediate that I'm aware of that the needs to happen in the Fish Hatchery Building. With that said, it's more a matter of trying to line up the the two projects such that we can bring them together and have them open in the approximately same timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ver. Thank you, Mr. Ver.
Wait, councillor Guardian.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Dufour was reading my mind and asked a number of my questions. So I just have one more. Come through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ver. Would you be able to kind of give us a sense how many people visit the Mill Market on a weekly basis? Would you say in the several hundred would be a conservative number or right about there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Gardi. That would be a very conservative number. On a Saturday, they can get up to three thousand visitors.
Can you say that again?
Three thousand visitors.
Thank you.
That's it. My regrets to councillor Dufour, because if he's able to read your mind, that would probably that would that that was probably be that would that would probably be a very frightening thing. That would be a probably a very frightening thing. I don't have anybody left left on my list here. Do I have anybody else that wants to speak to this or has any questions, councillor Vezel Allen? Did I already have you, councillor Vezel Allen?
You did. I just have a comment.
Okay, we go ahead, and then we'll 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 circle back to councillor Shoemaker's suggestion.
So just in terms of deferral, based on the funding application, currently, most federal applications are taking upwards to six months to a year, depending on the ministry. I met with some folks from Heritage and the program that's happening right now at the Old Stone House. They it took them a year to find out about it. So whereas, you know, working with our federal representatives can be helpful, there is a process, and it can be quite lengthy. So I I don't support deferral, the fact that the application's in, and hopefully it was vetted again and and well. I support moving forward, because I think if we defer this any longer than, as Mr. Ver said, it really affects the synergies of both of the projects coming to fruition in a timely fashion. So I'm supportive of of where we're at right now, especially because we do have the the dollars available. And I think having three thousand people on a Saturday in downtown is going to be pretty fantastic.
So councillor Shoemaker, had I known she was going to speak to your motion before she you tabled it, I would have made her wait till after you tabled it. So why don't we? Did you want to speak to this matter or the deferral? Because if you want to be the deferral, then I'm going to go to councillor Shoemaker first.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the the lateness on this. I just thought of a question in regards to the three thousand people. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ver. How many parking spaces do we have downtown? And how many were we adding to this? Sorry, I'm just I couldn't remember how many we were adding to the final plaza project.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. The plaza itself will have approximately twenty nine spaces. But when we've looked at the parking in and around the plaza area, we find there's more than enough parking with the North City parking lot, with the on-street parking on Queen and Brock, with the lots in behind Queen. We've got a lot of parking in that area, so we're we're comfortable that there'll be lots of parking for people to attend the market.
Okay, that was kind of what I was thinking, because I'm just saying three thousand is a lot more than I was expecting as well. Do you happen to know the peak number? I know three thousand on a Saturday, but do we happen to know if they have an idea what like peak would be at one time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. I don't think I would be able to give you an answer to that question. I'm looking at my colleague Brent Laming to see if he would know.
Right, your mic's not on yet. So this is this is the peak number of people there at any given time?
Yeah, like if they had three thousand a day, would we say there's like a hundred cars at one time would be the highest, or?
Do you understand the question, Mr. Laming?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. Yes, on a peak Saturday, about four thousand people would be there on any given Saturday, even through COVID. The lowest number was seven hundred, and the and the we're at capacity at forty vendors right now, so.
But I think the question, I think the question isn't how many people over the course of the day? The question is, do you know a peak of how many people are there? What's the highest number of people there at the same time is what he's asking?
Yeah, at any one time, four thousand is over the day. You're looking at probably neighborhood of five hundred people at a ti- at one time.
Okay, so then we believe we have, I know not everyone's going to drive and people carpool, but we believe we have enough parking in the area to accommodate five hundred.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. That's correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Shoemaker, did you want to move a deferral? Okay, and any specific time you want to return this to council?
Well, I'd move the deferral to return this subsequent to any decision on funding from the federal government.
Okay, that's clear. Let me get a second for that, then I'll go to you, councillor Nero. You're seconding that, councillor Bruni? Councillor Nero, do you have a question or comment on this? Go ahead. Yeah, I don't. We're now we're on the deferral motion. Okay, so this we'll vote on the deferral motion, and we'll move back to the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ver. I certainly get where councillor Shoemaker wants to go with this and why. I I just don't see at the end of it all what we're going to gain, because we're still going to apply for the funding. And if that funding fails, we're in the same spot we are today. So as far as I'm concerned, we should just move the project forward, apply for the funding, and see what happens. I mean, if we get the funding, great. It just replaces what we're what we're approving today. Those are my thoughts.
I should. I'm sorry. I should have started in council.
Kind of prefaced my.
Oh, you don't have anything further?
Nothing.
Councillor Bruni, do you have any further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be short. I I I agree with councillor Shoemaker regarding the deferral. I hate to see our taxpayers' money going specifically for this project before we apply for some type of government funding. So I think it's important that we apply for the funding first. And let's see where that goes, if we're acceptable. I I don't know why we were we were refused from the agriculture, food, and rural affairs. But I'm sorry, the application was the Infrastructure Canada Green and Inclusive Community Building Program. So I don't know why we were refused that money, but I would like to see us apply any other type of funding and not go into our asset management reserve. As Michelle mentioned, seven hundred and seventy two thousand came from twenty twenty one surplus. So I would hate to use that money just specifically for this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Nero. I have councillor Dufour, then councillor Hollingsworth, and councillor Gardi.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As, you know, I think was clear in my questions, I think that, you know, city staff has done an admirable job in keeping that building going for as long as it has. I think taking a building, and I work in the construction industry for ten years past its expected lifespan, speaks to the the care that they gave it, but it also very much speaks to the need for a a new and proper building. I do not support the deferral. I think that the level of funding, while it is relevant and important, it doesn't necessarily speak to the strategic value and the importance of this project, not just to the downtown, but also to any future development of the Gateway Site. Clearly, this council has really moved that project forward in a number of significant ways with the relocation of the rail line, the addition of the frontage on Bay Street. I think this really completes kind of the package for that Gateway Site to really be development ready with no longer having a a tenant there all the time. So I think there's a lot of really good reasons why we would continue to move this forward while we wait for the funding. And so that's why I'll be voting against the deferral. Thanks.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I have faith in staff to basically secure future funding. They have shown us since we've been on this council that they work very hard at their grant applications. And I have faith in our mayor and other leaders in this community to represent to Saint Marie at the higher tables at the federal level. Granted, we can't assume that we're going to be successful in receiving this fund, but I do have faith. Having said that, I also want to say that this particular existing market, I've had the privilege to be part of the infancy. I remember when we first built the Mill Market, working with two other individuals to get it going. And honestly, I am not an engineer. I am not a building expert, but I know that back then there were issues. And I know that there's issues that are still growing when you walk through. We also know that the washroom facilities are not really most appropriate, as one example. With the new building, we're going to have better washing facilities. We're going to have better facilities to educate on the importance of eating healthy. Having said that, we also know that we don't have a proper grocery store right in the downtown area. On Gore Street, we do have a wonderful grocery for good, but we don't have a proper grocery store. We know that there's going to be more density happening downtown, meaning there's going to be more apartments, there's going to be better housing and so forth. And people are going to be walking more. They're not going to rely on cars as much. So wouldn't it be nice that people can walk to a central area, pick up fresh vegetables, fresh food easier? So I support the idea of we continue to pursue the idea of building a brand new building. And having said that, one last other point is it's a temporary building, what we have now. I do worry that we continue to put money into a building that we may not be using in a year or two years, throwing good money away. Isn't it time to start putting good money into a solid future? Having said that, I do have faith that we are going to receive a grant money, and thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gardi. This is on the deferral, councillor Gardi.
Well, I'll let you navigate me through my comments. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So i- it's my opinion that the current building isn't satisfactory. It's not commensurate with with how many people are going and how many people enjoy it and the opportunity that it provides for local growers and producers. It goes hand in glove with what we're trying to do to revitalize downtown, especially with the public square that we're we're looking to create. If all the councillors take a look at Municipal World issue, June twenty twenty two, that all of you have on your desk right now. It speaks specifically to revitalizing communities across Canada, and the cover article is revitalizing communities across Canada Town Square Developments on page five. And it speaks to what communities and not metropolises, cities are doing across the country. It cites Aurora, Ontario, Medicine Hat, Alberta, Esquimalt, British Columbia, and Innisville, Ontario. Aurora has a population of sixty two thousand people. It's investing fifty million dollars, five zero million dollars in their town square. Innisville has a population of forty thousand people. It's investing eleven million dollars in its public square. Esquimalt has a population of seventeen thousand dollars. With a common thread in all of these, if you look at the article, is that they're all facing challenges, but what all of the communities have chosen to do is to drive forward. Now, I don't know why we would delay something that has been such a hit in our community. Between three and four thousand people going there during the week, five hundred people at any given time. Outside of a Greyhound game, you don't see that critical mass of people anywhere. If we're going to bring that amount of people downtown, we need to get this done sooner rather than later. All of us know that there's uncertainty moving forward. I think deferring is a mistake. I would ask everybody to proceed. And I'm hopeful that we will be voting down councillor Shoemaker's deferral. Thanks.
So I'll just offer one common deferral, councillor Shoemaker. I thought quite about, I thought a lot about this today, because it's kind of one of the approaches that that I was considering kind of in the context of what council might want to do. But the reality is, it comes down to this for me. If you want to see the project move ahead and you're willing to support the project, council staff needs to 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 get that signal from us. And and frankly, from my perspective, I'm willing to proceed with the project without the money. I I think it's a critical project for our downtown. I think it's a critical project to make the the mill, the the town square attractive and work. And we've been working on this project for our entire term. I'm not going to repeat everything I said at the last council meeting about the importance of of aspiring to something and having some ambition and investing in our community. So in the end, although I'm going to really try and get additional resources, and although I'm going to try and get them in the near term, I'm willing to spend our municipal dollars doing this. So I don't want to, I don't want to put the project off. I want to see the project move forward. So for that purpose, I won't support the deferral, and I want to.
I won't support the deferral and I want to hopefully get significant support from council so staff could. Continue to work with the architect and get this moving as of tomorrow. So anybody else on the deferral? So in favor of the deferral? So we have Counselor Scott, Shoemaker and Bruni opposed to the deferral. There's the remaining eight of us. So that would be Christian Nero, Dufour, Hill Singer, Vezel Allen, Gardi. Hollingsworth and myself. So that brings us back to the main motion. A number of us made comments in the deferral that would probably be consistent with the main motion. So I'm not going to come back to the people that spoke to it. On the deferral. Anybody want to speak to the main motion? Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I appreciate that it looked like the deferral was going to go that way. And the the project itself, we're we're being asked tonight to add another one point four million. When the project itself, the the plaza proposal came to us in, I think it was August nineteen. The amount that the city was being asked to put in was two point two million. When we approved the construction of the plaza a couple of meetings ago, the amount that the city was putting in was something like seven point nine million, an eight point nine million dollar project. Or my my rough numbers. And now we're being asked to add another one point five million to the the kind of global project. So. The plaza and surrounds are now pushing eleven million. The city's contribution is about nine million. And. I guess, where does it end? How much money is this council willing to put into this project? And and I heard that the one point five, Mr. Mayor, is something that you're willing to proceed. Without funding, you know, if the city has to put it in on their own, it will. Seems obviously the rest of council agrees with that as well. I mean, there's another motion we could move here, which is why don't we just eliminate a cost. Limit on this project altogether because it seems to me the council is willing to spend any amount of money on this project that is going to come forward. So. We're at eleven million. Why not twenty? Why not thirty? Why not do like Aurora and spend sixty million? Okay, well, we need either other sources of government funding or to put a cap on this project. And there is no cap. And and it's a vanishing amount because whether we're spending five or ten or fifteen or twenty, it seems that there is no amount too much for this council to approve. So I mean, it just goes to show a willingness to proceed with this. Project in the face of denials from upper levels of government, a lack of public support, in my opinion. And I I have long ago stopped supporting the the project and and I just think that it's. Absurd that we continue to increase the spending limit on this so drastically.
Thank you, Counselor Maker. Counselor Gardi?
Thanks. So I don't know what people who are voting against this envisage for the mill market. So the building, I would think, is probably not going to last a heck of a lot longer. We don't have proper facilities. There are three or four thousand people going there a week. I I I would like. You mentioned Counselor Counselor Shoemaker mentioned that there isn't public support. For the project. I I assume he's talking about the project at large. But. I'm going to choose my words carefully. If I if I were aspiring aspiring to appeal to the community at large, I think I would be. Supportive of 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 funding someplace that so many people from so many different demographics and parts of our community. Enjoy. No one here has said that, you know, we're going to spend twenty million dollars. We've staff has brought forward a pretty definitive amount, again, that. Will vote on shortly. But we had our say initially last time. And I don't know how we proceed with this project without having an element of it that's so instrumental to its success. So. I I I I don't see the I don't see the reasoning on it. I. Don't like the fact that, you know, Counselor Shoemaker, and I know it's it's more rhetoric than anything that you're insinuating that anybody, including myself, has like. Will 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 vote on any number. That's that's just not the case. So that's where I'm at on this. And I'm hopeful, like I said, that we're going to get support to move this forward. Because the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. And if anybody thinks it's going to get any cheaper or less expensive by deferring it and the like. Well, that's just, they should know that's just not the case because it's not going to happen.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Hill Singer?
Thank you. Just quickly. This is a game changer for this community, not just the downtown. This is a complete game changer for this community. And for all the reasons that all of us who were in support of moving this project ahead. And for all of the reasons that the staff talked about about how we can manage it. And for some of the reasons that I mentioned when we had this conversation the last time, which are other communities. Like Thunder Bay, who had four hundred jobs created because they undertook significant investment. Because they had significant increase in tax assessment, which brings other money back into our community to help us with our services. And 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 so much more, so much more. So we we need to proceed. We need to be brave. And we need to follow the plan and it's going to work out and it's going to be great. And we are going to be so happy. That we took that step, that we had the courage to invest in this community, to invest in the downtown. And 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 it's a game changer. Thanks.
Any other comments, council? Counselor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I said the last time about the plaza. I I I think that. You know, it was really interesting following the community conversation after your words and and our vote last time because. A lot of the people that I was talking to, a lot of people especially who are are younger, who have made Sioux St. Marie their home for decades to come. A lot of people appreciate the fact that this council has the vision and the boldness to actually invest in our downtown. I don't think that a council can rightly expect businesses and entrepreneurs and citizens to invest in a place that they refuse to invest in. I think by moving this mill market, I think that, you know, we clearly have. Three really major significant spots on our waterfront to really start to attract. The kind of big investment that the city has always been starving for. And I think that if you want to attract that kind of investment, you have to be the kind of council and the kind of body that is willing to. Put that smart capital forward first. To constantly defer, to constantly wait on everyone else to come and do your heavy lifting for you. Like to me, it's akin to investing for your retirement by hiding some cash under the mattress. You need to be smart. You need to take risks and you need to have vision. I think that's what this council is doing. Thanks.
Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not that I don't oppose the the plaza or the mill market. What I do oppose is the added costs, the increased costs. And I respect every councillor here, but I was listening to Counselor Gardi and and he mentioned. Regarding all the investment those other municipalities were putting into their downtown, which is which is great. But nobody knows how much money was provided by the government. And all I'm saying is with this deferral is and the mayor has has stated that he would work very hard as our lead. To to see if there's other type of funding available to move this project forward. We're just throwing the one point four million in there and then. We don't know if we're going to get that money back. Half of it, some of it, or none of it. So it it's not that, well, I'll speak for myself. I'm not opposed about the mill market. I think I think it's a great place, but. I think we have to be careful that how much money are we putting into this into this project with the increasing costs? And if the government can provide us some type of relief, I say that's great. But to put all the money in and then after go and apply for funding, you might not get that funding. And that's my comments. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions, council? Counselor Vezelwellen, I feel like I've let you speak to this a couple of times, okay, Counselor Vezelwellen?
Just very brief.
Well.
Very brief.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to I I echo Counselor Gardi and Counselor Hill Singer's comments. I also want to make a point that the existing infrastructure, especially with my time on the Accessibility Committee and and Mr. McConnell's been very instrumental in that committee. A lot of our folks with mobility devices are not able to attend. There's nowhere for them to go to the washroom. There's nowhere for young families to change their young children and things like that. So we really need to take a look at. How we're providing accessible spaces for our folks that have to rely on devices for mobility and and that just is not the case at the current facility. So I'm really excited that with the new facility that so many more people can access it and have full capabilities. So thank you.
Okay, so so I'll just gonna respond to three of Counselor Shoemaker's comments and then we can call the vote on it. Counselor Shoemaker, and I understand why. You've had a habit of lumping all of the dollars into municipal dollars. And I recognize that the federal government. Gave us funds that we could use for things that are non. Public square projects. But some of the nine million you're referencing is federal funds that we received from the federal government. So the the specific municipal contribution, I would suggest, is inconsistent with how you represented it. I think that it's important to recognize. You made a comment about a lack of public support. And I think it's, I think it's, I I don't take any issue with that being your gauge. That's not my gauge. I I've had a number of business leaders reach out to me and tell me they hoped the plaza moved forward. I've I we have we heard that actually in one of the chamber events where a business leader indicated. That that there was a communication issue because he didn't think we were doing a good enough job on on selling the value of it, thought it was a good project. And I've had residents say the same thing to me. I was at Drake Park. Where my family lives and a young family was there and the mother walked up to me and said, I really hope it works because it would be a lovely place to bring kids on a Saturday. Now, that's my gauge of it. But in any event, whether there is public support for something or isn't public support for something. It's up to us, the eleven of us, to decide whether to move forward with it, independent of that. And in a representative representative democracy, we have to make that decision. And we have to make the decision based on information given to us and based on a plan we're moving forward with. And I think that this decision is consistent with the plan that we've been trying to move forward with. Two final comments. I don't think there's any basis to say that we would spend any amount of money on that. I think you know me well enough that that I too have my limits. And I made that very clear with the twin pack. I wasn't going to go over what we had ultimately decided to 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 do there. Notwithstanding that, we added what I think is the same amount of money to build a walking track. So, you know, we added over one million. Might have been one point four even. I don't recall, but it was close to what we're adding here to build a walking track. So this, in the context of other things that we're doing, I think is a reasonable investment. And I think it really, to me, the mill market is critical to the whole plaza project. So there is a limit. And I would suggest to you that that. There's no basis for saying that any of us would spend any amount of money to make this happen. I think it's it's a good project. I think the community will appreciate it and enjoy it when it's done. And I think it complements the rest of the work we're doing. So I'm supportive of moving it forward. And if we do are able to garner more resources in the meantime, it will will diminish the burden. Back to us and we'll have resources to put elsewhere. But I think. The fact that we have access to these resources is evidence that we are managing things pretty prudently here. And and that we need to, as my colleagues point out, make make investments in ourselves and our own community if we want other parties to make investments in our community. So, council, that should be the end of it. The vote, do you have the vote up?
It is up.
All in favor? Opposed? Just cast your vote on each side. The motion carries eight to three.